We may.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening for the regular January meeting of the County Legislature. Will everyone please rise for the invocation to be delivered by Pastor Moore? Pastor Moore?
We cut out at exactly the moment you called my name. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, let's pray. We should pray that this works. Anyway, Lord, we are thankful for this day. We pray for those who are sick and who are struggling tonight. We pray that you would give them grace and help. We pray for those who are mourning because of loss and separation and difficulties, which these last days have brought upon us. And I pray for this group that has been brought together to help lead. Pray you'd help them with the challenges in their lives. And we pray that-
Chairman, I think we lost Pastor Moore.
Pastor Moore, we lost you there for a second at the end of your invocation.
Lord bless this meeting.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Moore.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that, ladies and gentlemen.
Not at all. Please remain standing now for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by legislator Russo.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of Wichita, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, legislator Russo. Now, time to open for privilege of the floor. We invited members of the public to submit comments to a form on our website. I would ask the clerk to read any comments you received into the record at this time.
You received three submissions. First is from Claudia Kavanaugh of Schenectady. Dear members of the legislature, I'm a property owner in the city of Schenectady and have tried to get an appointment with Mayor McCarthy, but have had no success. Instead, I have decided to reach out to county legislature to address what many believe is an unfair representation of our city. The Black Lives Matter banner that has been displayed in front of City Hall for over a year now should be paved over as soon as weather permits. I submitted a FOIL request to find out who paid for the banner. When I received the response to my request, I was shocked to learn that the city of Schenectady's utilities department paid $13,000 to a Koho's company for the BLM matter, banner. In the summer of 2020, many municipalities were bullied into having BLM banner painted on city streets and BLM flags hung on the city hall buildings around the country. Enough is enough. Black Lives Matters and Marxist organization and the troubling that that the banner remains on our city street. In order to show the inclusion and diversity that the mayor's office claims to support, I, along with several hundred property taxpaying citizens in Schenectady, propose that the phrase "Make America Great Again" be placed on Erie Boulevard. I was born in Schenectady and always believed that we were an inclusive city where no one group could be represented without representation from all groups. Marxism has no place in our city and country that I love and return to after my retirement. Since the mayor's office has decided to represent a Marxist ideology, we would love to show that Schenectady stands up for America and our values and culture. We are not a Marxist city, and I, along with many taxpayers, do not believe this is an unreasonable request. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present this proposal on behalf of hundreds of patriots and property taxpayers who would like this request to be taken, to be considered. If you cannot achieve this for whatever reason, I look forward to the removal of the BLM banner as soon as possible. Sincerely, Claudia Kavanaugh. Our next submission is from Chad Putman, Putman in Schenectady. County city, county, county city should make shelter right. Shelter is a human right. I'm calling on new Schenectady Council, City Council and Schenectady County Legislature to pass a resolution in 2022 guaranteeing shelter for those who need present, present as homeless in the, who present as homeless in the city and county of Schenectady regardless of the temperature outside. As it stands, we have a wealth of resources and community shelters, organizations and funding from American Rescue Plan to ensure those experiencing homelessness in our community have access to shelter regardless of temperature. In 2016, then-New York Governor Andrew Cuomo set the initial compassionate standard to shelter the homeless when temperatures drop below 32 degrees Fahrenheit. The executive order became widely known as Code Blue. The standard remains in place today and is meant to make it easier for those experiencing homelessness to secure shelter during dangerous winter weather. A resolution from the Schenectady City Council and the Schenectady County Legislature would provide a meaningful new standard for those experiencing homelessness in our community to rely on when they encounter barriers to temporary and ongoing shelter. The stated commitment will build on the network of resources available to those experiencing homelessness during Code Blue and extend the safety net throughout the year, setting a new compassionate standard that shelters are right. Thank you. Our final submission was submitted by CSA, county local aid, five union leaders, Darren Sinemberg, President John Roth, Vice President Jamie Hunger Shaffer, Secretary and Katie Sewell, Treasurer, hundreds of CSA members, who we would like to recognize for having shown tremendous resilience since the onset of the COVID pandemic and who have continued to show extraordinary dedication and effort in providing the residents of Schenectady County with vital services necessary for their health and well-being. While providing those services, our members have faced their own personal challenges with COVID. Despite that, they have continued to report to work day in and day out. Many of them, such as our members at the DMV, the Finance Department, SJTA, the County Clerk's Office, Purchasing Human Resources, the Department of Social Services, Community Services, the Sheriff's Department, Schenectady County Community College, WIC, the District Attorney's Office and the Board of Elections, to name a few, have public-facing jobs where they encounter members of the public daily. Others, such as our members of the Probation Department, Children's Services, Adult Protective Services, Glendale Nursing Home, Public and Environmental Health, Children with Special Needs, Senior Long-Term Care, Unified Communication Center, the Department of Engineering and Public Works, and the Office of Facilities are out in the community interacting with the public, providing invaluable services which directly support the safety and health of county residents. Some county employees perform their job even with limited resources and staffing, and sometimes even despite the barriers put in place by the very policies which are supposed to guide their efforts. These members work tirelessly and often without thanks. Today, with COVID infections and transmission rates higher than before and hospitalizations and deaths on the rise, they also work with fear and uncertainty. On March 15th, 2020, we sat in the legislative chambers along with county leaders, members of the public and members of the press applauding the legislature's passing of a resolution regarding the establishment of a pandemic sick bank. This resolution authorized the county manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with all bargaining units to provide a sick bank of 30 workdays used for absences, which are necessary and directly related to protect the health and safety of the individuals or workforce in the community as a whole. What became known as the pandemic emergency sick bank policy expanded upon the mandates enacted around that time by New York State, requiring employers to provide employees with up to 14 days of paid COVID sick time. Since that time, the county has provided many members with paid time off under the pandemic sick bed, both satisfying its obligation under state mandates as well as providing an expanded benefit on a case-by-case basis of up to, and in some cases even over 30 days. On behalf of our members, we would like to extend our sincere appreciation to you for this much-needed benefit. You didn't have to do that, but in doing so, you enabled our members, your workforce, to take care of their health and their families without the added stress and worry of ongoing unpaid, of going unpaid. As it, it has enabled them to take the time necessary to quarantine if they have been exposed, thereby reducing the risk of transmission to their coworkers or the public. It has enabled those who have become infected with COVID to isolate, prioritize their health and to stay home until they are well. It has enabled parents to take care of their children while they are quarantined from school. This policy has directly served its intended purpose, which was to protect our members, other employees and the public. During the pandemic, our other state mandates were put in place, including a mandate for a workforce reduction. County leaders responded quickly and put in place a plan for some departments to switch to remote operations. Our members quickly adjusted and continued to show resilience, working diligently to ensure the residents of Schenectady County did not go without essential services. When the mandates lifted and it became safe to do so, our members were directed to return to in-person and normal operations. They did so with the understandable reluctance, but again showed flexibility, resilience and dedication. Today, many of our neighbors in public and private industry, near and far, have enacted successful policies for remote operations. Some never stopped. Others have adapted it as the best practice. Currently, however, there are no policies in place to allow for remote operation for the members in Schenectady County. In the 22 months since COVID changed our way of life, there have been many changes to working conditions, health guidelines and county policies, including the unilateral changes to the pandemic sick bank policy. Our members have achieved an over 80% rate of vaccination and have continued to adhere to mask and social distance mandates. Our unvaccinated members have been tested weekly in accordance with the county's employee COVID-19 testing policy for unvaccinated employees, which took effect October 25th, 2021, and which we have recently, been recently informed, was just suspended. Members continue to utilize the guidance offered through the CDC, New York State Department of Public Health and Schenectady County Department of Public Health. Despite this, the county workforce is being impacted by COVID. As labor leaders, we continue to strive for a safe and equitable workplace so our members can perform their respective duties loyally, efficiently and continuously under the terms of our collective bargaining agreement. We share the county's desire to provide and maintain a safe and healthy workplace for serving the public and believe that the best way to accomplish this goal is working together. We are proud of and value the collaborative relationship we have developed with county leaders through ongoing, regular, respectful and candid conversations over the past few years. Given the fluidity of the pandemic and ever-changing mandates coupled with anxiety and fear permeating through the community and our workforce, it is our belief now that more than ever, we must draw upon this partnership. Today, we ask that you consider the options available to keep the Schenectady County community safe. And while doing so, you don't overlook the fact that our members are an integral part of this community. We ask that you work with us to enact policies that focus on protecting members and affording them the support and flexibility they need to continue to provide services to the community. We ask that you consider a policy that allows for flexibility, such as performing work remotely when feasible or necessary due to staffing issues, quarantine or isolation, and that accessing, accessing paid COVID sick time does not require restrictive steps that serve only to bog down an already stressed healthcare system. We ask that while you consider the various options for protecting the county's employees, you note that you all look, all took the recommended precautions of conducting your business here tonight from the safety of your homes. Our members at present do not have that option, and they should. That was our final submission.
Thank you, Jeff. Those of you who's floors now closed. So now call to order the January regular meeting of the County Legislature. Would the clerk please call her own?
Mr. Fields.
Present.
Mr. Russo.
Present.
Ms. Pratt.
Present.
Mr. McGill.
Present.
Mr. Constantine.
Here.
Ms. Gata.
Here.
Mr. Frazoni.
Present.
Mr. Cuomo.
Present.
Mr. Paterni.
Present.
Ms. Sossilich. Mr. Hess.
Present.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Present.
Mr. McDonald.
Here.
Mr. Jazinski. 15 present, 0 ask.
Members received copies of the minutes from the meeting held on December 14th, meeting held on December 20th and the meeting held on January 3rd. Is there a motion without the minutes?
So moved.
There's a second. Thank you. Thank you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are hereby adopted. The clerk will read the list of reports received.
We received reports from our Finance Department of Ways and Measures and the County Clerk.
Thank you. Legislator Paterni, reports from the Committee on Public Facilities, Transportation and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Public Facilities, Transportation and Infrastructure met on January 3rd, 2022 and reported to the agenda resolutions seven and eight.
Thank you, sir. Legislator Fields, reports from the Committee on Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Ways and Means met on January 3rd, 2022 and reported to the agenda, resolutions seven, eight, nine and 10.
Thank you, sir. Our first resolution this evening is Resolution 7-22. Sponsor is legislator Paterni. Their clerk will read.
A resolution to amend the 2022 Capital Improvement Program to provide funding for an expansion of the Schenectady County Department of Motor Vehicles.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hughes.
I just want to share some background on this for people tuning in and also for folks who are joining us at this session that weren't here last year. You, Mr. Chairman, made significant reference in your remarks last week to this legislature's commitment to maintain high-quality services and also control the cost of government. And I'd like to single out and commend our county clerk, Kara Ackerly, at this point for following that. This is an initiative that, that she began by analyzing the revenue in various upstate, more or less rural, a little bit urban sorts of counties. The revenue generated through motor vehicle offices and discovered that in some instances, their revenue was significantly higher than ours. And on a deeper investigation, discovered that those county clerk's offices were taking in registration work from downstate dealers who were having difficulty in getting their registrations processed. So this appropriation that's before us tonight will create space within our DMV office on Upper State Street to have a separate operation that will provide registration services to downstate dealers. It'll make our office a lot more productive and will generate additional revenue. This is the kind of creative thinking that we need from all our county leaders. And it's the sort of initiative that, that we should support. So that's the backstory on, on where this, this came from. And again, my commendations to County Clerk Ackerly for her foresight and bringing this measure forward.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Seeing now, the clerk, please call her own.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine. Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frazoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterni.
Aye.
Ms. Sossilich.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski. 15 I, 0 N.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 8-22. Sponsor is legislator Paterni. Their clerk will read.
A resolution to amend the 2022 Capital Improvement Program to provide funding for the purchase and installation of certain equipment at Schenectady County Correctional Facility.
Any discussion? Seeing now, the clerk, please call her own.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
McGill.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Mr. Constantine. Yes.
Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frazoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterni.
Aye.
Ms. Sossilich.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
15 I, 0 N.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 9-22. Sponsor is legislator Fields. The clerk will read.
Resolution authorizing the chargeback of uncollectible taxes to certain school districts.
Any discussion? Seeing now, the clerk- Excuse me. I have a quick, I have a question. Um, I see that it was saying that, um, these were erroneously levied and therefore uncollectible. Can we get a little bit of discussion, explanation as to why that occurred? And also, why is there such a big difference in the two? Please. I saw Mr. McFlorist. John?
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
These two particular properties, let me take a step back. This is really a timing issue in terms of when the school levies are approved vis a vis the county adoption of tax levies and associated tax warrants. One was a minor one because of a, of an exemption issue. The other one was a, wasn't quite a tax subsidiary issue, but it was one where there was a tax bill in question for several years and it was an agreement made be between the courts and the property owner associated with that particular one, which is why it was so large. It was a, two pieces of property larger in nature in terms of both sizes as well as associated tax bill.
Thank you so much. Any further discussion? Seeing now, the clerk, please call her own.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frazoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterni.
Aye.
Ms. Sossilich.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
15 I, 0 N.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 10-22. Sponsor is legislator Fields. The clerk will read.
A resolution regarding the processing of real property tax corrections and refunds for the 2022 calendar year.
Any discussion? Seeing now, the clerk, please call her own.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frazoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterni.
Aye.
Ms. Sossilich.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Jazinski.
Aye.
15 I, 0 N.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. And that concludes our business for the regular meeting of the legislature for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Let's see, Hughes, is there a second?
A second.
Legislator Field, solid favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Aye.
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 Legislature stands adjourned and I thank you all.